And I'm going to start the meeting now at seven oh five. Meeting started and I'm going to call to order and I'm going to do my introduction, which is item. And I just want to welcome everyone to the October virtual meeting for the Altadena Town Council. With a big portion of our meeting being dedicated to our up and coming ATSC elections. I'd like to give out a big thank you and welcome all the candidates. That are joining us this evening. So we have an extra fourteen people in our meeting and I'd like to. Use them also if you see some new faces in the crowd. Just know that these could be your prospective council members in the future. So stay tuned. Okay, moving on, item one point two, roll call, Councilmember Jones. Victoria, you're on mute.
Veronica.
Veronica, sorry. I was thinking.
Let's start over. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Please answer after I call your name. Antonio Bersera.
Here.
Akuri Izimi.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Louis Malone.
Present.
Diane Markison.
Here.
Jeff Simmons.
He's here.
I know Jeff, you're still here. You did not check out. Gloria Sanika.
Here.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Aaron Cheetah.
Here.
Dr. Regina Wilkins.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
We have a full house, everyone present.
Thank you. Moving on, item one point three, Councilmember Sutherland. Approval of the October meeting agenda.
Okay, the Executive Committee met on October the thirteenth and approved the agenda as you've seen on the screen. Since then, there's been one addition and that is on number. It'll be number seven point two. It's a census tract report for forty six ten. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
Pat, I'd like to add a census tract report for forty six thirteen for something that just happened today.
Okay, forty six thirteen, it'll be number seven point three.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Um, no other additives?
In that case, I move to accept the agenda as amended.
We have a second?
Yeah, second. Take your pick.
I see Councilmember Jones in the top corner. So, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's gonna be hard for me to read this with. So I'm probably gonna, because there's so many faces, do it in reverse. All those. Say nay and any abstentions. As I don't hear any abstentions and I'm going to assume, I'm going to say it's unanimous. There's too many, there's with two screens, it's going to be hard to do that with a vote. Okay, I'm gonna move on now to item two, two point one Chairman's Report. I just want to remind everybody, if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. I know all familiar with Zoom now, if you're not muted, it can cause feedback. So please be aware of that. I'd also like to know this is, this is the last ATC meeting before the election. And we all know the election election's coming up and we're all absorbed with what's happening on a national level. But remember, think globally and act locally. And save some energy for our election because it's where we can make the most difference within our community. So, so keep thinking about that. I would also personally like to thank Supervisor Catherine Bargas and her office. For a recent backpack giveaway that she held at Farnsworth Park. Where she also personally came and handed out care packages. On a different note, with the national election, I'd also like to know that. The LA County Register is now collecting ballots on a daily basis. From the ballot boxes at Farnsworth and Charles White. This is to encourage the safety at those ballot boxes, especially with some of the things we're hearing lately. And lastly, I just want to point out that because so much of the time this evening will be dedicated to our up and coming election. And hearing from the candidates, we have kept the agenda tight. We will not be having any presentations this evening and all reports. We have recommended to keep to a minimum, keep within five minutes and all your questions concise. So we can keep moving forward and hear from everybody. On that note, I'm going to move forward to item two point two for the Vice Chair, Councilmember Sutherland.
This is also pretty short, the. General public comment, which is item number six on the agenda. I have received, I think it's six, pretty close to that, public comments and I will read them into the record. At the appropriate time in the meeting. And that is it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item two point three, Councilmember Jones, recording secretary. You're muted again, sorry.
Hey, good evening again. The minutes were emailed to each council member for review. I did receive a correction to the minutes. I have made the correction. And I want to make a motion that we accept the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty minutes. As presented with the correction and that they be placed on the webpage.
For a second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstained, I was absent.
Okay, Councilmember Simmons abstains. Thank you. Okay, moving on, item two point four, Treasurer's Report, Councilmember Lee.
Hello, the balance is still quite healthy, not a lot of checks going in and out. Two thousand ninety-eight and twenty-two cents. And since we're not having any donations, it's kind of just hovering there for a while till we're. Back in the community room passing around our tin can. So, healthy balance, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Councilmember Wong, item two point five, Corresponding Secretary.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So. I'm just going to give everyone an update on our lively website, altadinatowncouncil.org. We received information to share with our, the rest of the community. Congresswoman Judy Chu is doing a twenty twenty voter info event this Friday, October twenty-third. Also, you'll be hearing later as we keep updating the Altadena election. We have a link on our website. We'll also be updating some information on the Bobcat Fire. As it relates to closures, a lot of people are asking about trails. And at this point, the Cheney Gate at Cheney Trail Road is closed on weekends. So we're going to just kind of keep that information updated and then. Not sure if Councilmember Sanika is going to talk about the amazing COVID testing. But we will be, the information on that for the next Monday and Tuesday. Is still up online, so you can check that out. And again, if anybody has events, please send me information, dorothy.wong@altadinatowncouncil.org. Thank you. Oh, Sam Estrada also gave me some flyers I'll be posting.
Thank you. Moving on, Public Safety Reports, item three, item three point one. California Highway Patrol, is Officer Cooper in the house?
I see him.
There's so many, I just want to make sure we acknowledge. Officer Cooper?
There you go. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Just before you start, I just want to ask one quick question to Pasadena media. Officer Cooper appears on the second page of this. Is there a way to have whoever's speaking appear on the first page so people can see them?
Don't know.
Is that possible?
Billy, go up to your, go up to your upper right of the, of the screen display and. Select Speaker View instead of Gallery View.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That may be my mistake. It's good to know for everybody too, if you're. Go ahead. Sorry, Officer Cooper.
No problem, I'm going to keep it short. I've got the stats for the month of September. For the month of September, we had fourteen property damage only collisions. We had six that had some form of injury and we had two hit and run collisions. It's, it's actually still a little lower than, than the numbers we were having pre-pandemic. But they are starting to increase just a little bit. So we are up in the area doing enforcement. I've got the radar trailer still out on Lincoln Avenue. It's going to be getting moved to Allen this week before Friday. So we'll get that trailer moved out there and do some enforcement out that direction. I did want to mention too that our academy, we have reopened it. So the classes, they closed it when, when the pandemic really started going and so. They have since opened it up and it's going now, but instead of running two classes, they're only running one. So they've, but they've added more cadets to that one class that they're running. So. But they are open and it looks like we should be getting two officers out of the next graduating class. So, other than that, that's all I've got unless anybody's got anything for me.
Any questions from the council? And as I can't see everybody at the same time, unmute yourself and then ask as well. Okay, Councilmembers.
Yes, Phil, I'm going to contact you soon when I get like two complaints within a week. That says maybe we need to take a look at something and it's Woodbury, surprise, surprise. So I'll be in touch with you as far as, you know, there's a number of different. Speed limits on that street, which makes it a little bit confusing, but.
Yeah, just depends on which section it's in. It seems like typically we.
Yeah, both of these, at least in our census tract, so you're looking from, you know, Fair Oaks East.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll be in touch.
You've got my email, just email me and I'll get out there and do some enforcement, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Councilmember Santangelo?
I don't know what screen I'm on. Yeah, I just want to echo what Pat said, the same thing. Last night, there was a guy running. Just going crazy between probably Los Robles and Lake. So yeah, it's, it's an issue. So.
Okay.
Just adding my two cents, thank you.
Okay, I'm looking over both pages. Any other council members have questions? Okay, moving on, item three point two, thank you very much, Officer Cooper. Really appreciate you coming and giving us your time. Item three point two, Altadena Sheriff's Station Captain Jacobs.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent. You guys are kind of, kind of fuzzy. So let me know if you can't hear me, but good evening and it's good to see everybody on Zoom, everybody healthy. I did want to mention one thing that we're going to have, we're going to be having a fundraiser. In partnership with Grocery Outlet on October thirtieth for the TSB deputies, the two deputies that were shot down in Compton. I do have a report on both of them that are doing surprisingly really, really well. The female deputy, her jaw is still wired closed, but she is in good spirits. She's able to talk. And she should be getting her casts off her hands in about another week or so. So. By the grace of God, they're, they're both doing well. So we're going to do a fundraiser, a hundred percent of the efforts are going to be going to. To their cause and they're, they're in rehab for a long, long time. So they're going to need it. But that's on October thirtieth from three to seven, but there'll be a flyer and I'll send a flyer out for you guys. Our Part One crime, I'll keep it brief. We're looking great. We're down thirty-two percent overall in Altadena. We, our robberies are down twelve and a half percent. And down forty-six percent over the past five years. So. We're definitely looking good there. We did have an incident, a robbery that occurred. There is a correction on the, on the. The crime sheet that I put out, it occurred in CT Census Trac forty-six thirteen rather than forty-six eleven. I'm sure you probably saw the address was, was wrong there, but it was at the Pizza Hut, was a delivery person, I'm sorry, person, the victim was working Pizza Hut. Delivered a customer, the customer became upset with the amount of money that. They were being charged for their order and basically threatened the victim. Yeah, with his dog of all things, that if he didn't leave the food, he'd sic his dog on him. So fearing for his safety, he left and that is considered a robbery. So detectives are working that case. Grand Theft Auto, we'll jump down to that. It's up about sixteen percent. We had seven more this time versus this time last year in twenty nineteen. There is no rhyme or reason to the vehicles that are, that are being stolen. But six out of the seven vehicles have been recovered. So they're, they're stolen for a short period of time, maybe commit a crime. And then just dropped off somewhere and then recovered throughout Los Angeles. I do want to mention the, the recent robbery. I know it occurred in October and we're doing September stats, but. The robbery that occurred Altadena Drive in Marengo with the, the Grocery Outlet employee Damian. What a, what a remarkable young man he is and, and the community really came together. Thank you, Victoria Knapp, for, for working with Grocery Outlet for that. And a GoFundMe page came together and my understanding is he's going to get his phone. Replaced and in addition, he's going to get a car so he doesn't have to walk to work, but. It doesn't make the crime go away and we are actively, actively. Looking into all, all the tips and things like that that people are bringing to our attention. We thought we had a couple suspects do the same crime in Temple City. But they turned out to be two male Hispanics and we're looking for two male blacks in a. Black newer model or black older model Mustang. So we are actively looking at that, but I'm, I'm glad to see that Damian's back to work. Something else that was brought to my attention is that the county Fifth District has, has answered some of the, the requests for. Signs to, to slow traffic down in some of our residential areas. And they're called go, go slow signs. I'm sure you guys have seen them. They, they're in the ground on posts, but they are. Just assigned material. But they've, they put ten of them up and within a week and a half, they were either vandalized, damaged. Or run over, someone didn't see them and they weren't paying attention. So. I, I really need the public to understand that these are put out there at the request of our neighbors. Our community to keep our people safe, to keep everybody safe. And vandalizing them on purpose, it's one thing if you don't see them. But if you vandalize them on purpose, it is a crime. It's a misdemeanor to vandalize or damage or steal county property. So. We, we don't take that lightly and we'll work, we'll partner with this, with the town and with the county. To make sure that we take those reports and, and if there's any video footage, then we'll, we'll go after the people that are just. Causing problems with that because they really are there for good intentions and. And to keep everybody safe and to slow down. And at the end of the day, we need, we all need to slow down. We heard that with Officer Cooper's. Stats from, from this month. So that's all I really have on, on our crimes. If anyone has any questions for me?
Councilmember Sutherland?
It's not so much a question. We seem in our Census Trac forty-six eleven to fit the jackpot this month. And it's very interesting when, when you sent me the information, Jory. Looks like that three, there were three catalytic converters in that bunch. Which is a whole bunch, it's, it's a lot to have in one specific area, I think, or I think, but you would know more.
You're kind of breaking up, but yeah, we, we still have a few catalytic converters that have been taken. Again, it's off of. Older model Honda Elements. I didn't think we had that many in town, but evidently we do. Jeep Cherokees, but they're all throughout the, all throughout the town and, and different reporting districts. But again, there are vehicles that are on the street, they're not in driveways. So they, they become easier targets when they're on the streets and sometimes dark streets and they can, they can get in and get out. They can cut those things in about ten seconds. And my understanding through my detectives is these Honda Elements have. The older models have a lot more precious metals in the catalytic converters that are worth a little bit more. But there has been some significant arrests throughout the San Gabriel Valley recently, which is why I think we're on a, on a slight downward. Theft in, in the catalytic converter area.
Just stolen my census, our census tract this month.
I know. Yeah, I wanted to mention one more thing is just for everybody's benefit. If you use the offer up or let it go or those kinds of websites, we did have one transaction that occurred. I'm not even sure what a skyjack lift is, but the, the potential buyer met the seller. And proceeded to take the item without paying for it. So. I just caution everybody out there that uses these platforms to, to sell things and buy things. Just, you know, we got a nice long curb right in front of our station, just pull up right in front of our station. Meet there, there's cameras. I don't think anyone's going to do anything bad in front of a sheriff station, but. It is always open to whoever wants to, to just meet there. It's safe and, and I'm pretty sure you'll, you'll, you'll have a fine transaction at the end of the day.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? Do I see any council members? No, okay. Thank you very much, Captain Jacobs. Really appreciate you spending the time with us this evening and being here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
You too. Moving on, item three point three, with the LA County Fire, Maria Grayken. I did see you here.
Hello, I am here. Okay, so I was trying to put the video on, but I guess it's not working. For the month of September in Altadena, there were a total of three hundred and sixteen responses. Two hundred and twenty-three of those were for medical calls. We had ten fires. Six service calls, two hazmat, nineteen hazardous condition. And fifty-six good intent calls. From the two hundred and twenty-three medical calls that we had, we transported a hundred and sixty-two patients. On the fires, there weren't any that were that significant. They were mostly trash fires and cooking fires. We did have. A couple of small little structure fires, one on September seventh on Kent Street. Which was in the attic above the master bedroom and that was accidental from an electrical junction box. And then we had a, a couple days later on the ninth on Figaroa Drive. There were some plumbers at the house doing some work and they accidentally caught on fire some lint that was behind the dryer. So this is also a reminder not only to clean out your lint trays, but to check behind your dryer as well for the buildup. Of lint and clean that out as well. And then we had a, it, it pops up with our new system. What we're seeing is that whatever calls our firefighters go on populate into the system, which. At times it can be good because you'll see kind of where your firefighters are also helping out. And one of those was on September twentieth. These now pop up on the Altadena reports. We did assist Pasadena Fire on a fully involved single family dwelling in Pasadena. So there were a few county resources that went over and. Engine sixty-three, I'm sorry, engine eleven and engine twelve, both were involved in that. So I've decided to list those as well. I've given you the total property loss. And damages in that column, which was nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that house. But I'm not including those in the total because they were not actually in Altadena. So I only carry forward totals for Altadena. If that all made sense to you. And then there were a number of power lines down, wires down throughout the month. We had a few windy days and so there were a number of those instances. There were, it looks like there were nineteen total. Of either wires down or power lines down. And then we had the nine traffic collisions that I have listed out for you. And that is it.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Knapp?
Just quickly, I wanted to thank you so much, Maria, for all of the communication regarding the Bobcat Fire. I know it was a lot of probably extra work to remember to loop us in twice a day, every day. But those updates were very valuable. I sent every single one out to the community. They were so grateful just to be updated. So I wanted to thank you personally because I know it was a lot of extra work.
Oh, it, it was my pleasure and you know, I, I have the Altadena Town Council, you're a group in my email. So it's very, very easy. I just enter Altadena Town Council. You know, the only drawback to that is that I have to be on a computer because I can't, I can't send you emails from my phone because you can't. You can't email to a group from the phone. But I, you know, I have my computer with me all the time, so that doesn't matter. And it's, it's very easy to keep you informed and I, it's necessary and. And I'm happy to have been able to do that.
Thank you. I think that, that thank you doesn't just come from Councilmember Knapp. I think we all agree with her as well. So thank you. And thank you for taking the time during that to also come to our ATC meetings and give updates. Because I'm sure your time was pressed. So any other questions from the council? Do I see any other? Nope. Okay, thank you very much, Maria. I really appreciate you coming as usual.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Community Reports, item four, we're going to start with four point one. Altadena Library. Today we have a, a new person joining us to the ATC, the new Assistant Director. Am I correct? Victor, and I'm, I'm going to try to pronounce your name. Is it Joberg? How do I pronounce it?
It's Joberg, but any pronunciation is totally fine. It's a difficult last name.
I just want to make sure I get it correct though.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Am I able to share my screen with you guys?
You should be able to. So you should be able to click on the share screens.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me tonight. This is my first meeting as, as was mentioned and I've been with the Altadena Library District for. A month now and I can say that I'm very excited about both the library district and the Altadena community. My wife and I just moved here from North San Diego County and we're really looking forward to getting to know the community. So. It's, it's important and helpful to attend these meetings. The biggest news that I want to share with you today is the fact that we have expanded. Our library access at our buildings and. You'll see the details here, but basically. I believe that we were the very first library system in Los Angeles County to welcome our community members back into our physical buildings on October sixth. Both the main library and the Bob Lucas branch are now, now open with limited hours and limited service models. We're offering patrons the opportunity to browse through our brand new books and check them out and also pick up their holds. We are still continuing with curbside, but for a lot of people, the expanded hours are very helpful and we're actually seeing. Usage of the curbside go down while the usage of the actual buildings are obviously going up. Patrons can also use the computer and use the printing and copying services. And at the Bob Lucas branch, we are offering. The ESL classes and the literacy tutoring. The library spaces have been configured so that we can ensure social distancing. And the community members that enter have to agree to our safety protocols prior to doing so. It's been very well received so far. In the first eleven days that we've been open, we've had over five hundred and fifty patrons use the services. And feedback has been positive. We even have had people be quite emotional about the fact that we're open again. Patrons have relayed the fact that this is the first time that they've actually gone anywhere. Grocery store and this is bringing normalcy to folks. So we're very happy to see that and. We'll be happy to see all of you back at the library as well. And we are also continuing to. Expand our offerings for those that prefer to use our services from home. You're probably aware that we offer Wi-Fi hotspots and laptops for. You're probably aware that we offer Wi-Fi hotspots and laptops for checkout. But we also now have added a telescope, which is which was checked out right away. So if you want to check out a telescope, you can get on a hold list for that. And we've also added virtual reality headsets. If you are interested in virtual reality and want to explore that from your home, you can do that with your library card. So that's quite exciting. And I also want to share verify that the libraries are not vote-by-mail drop-off locations for the national election, but the library is always happy to provide you with any information that you need in terms of where you can vote. And we even developed a little map that you can pick up here at the library if you decide to drop. And we also have another slide there that details the vote-by-mail drop-off boxes and voting centers local to us. And finally, I want to tell you about a very special virtual event that is going on on Sunday. The event is called Altadena Heroes, and it's presented by Altadena Arts, the Altadena Town Council, and the Historical Society in collaboration with the library, and it celebrates Charles White, Octavia Butler, Bob Lucas, and the Buffalo Soldiers. So it's at three P M. on Sunday, and we hope to see you there. And I thank you so much for your time and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Wong.
Hi, yes. So this is very exciting. Thank you for your presentation, and the library is such an important part of our community. So I went to the Bob Lucas Library. I picked up my Where to Vote map, and I also volunteered to and learned at the New Garden, Bob Lucas Library Demonstration Garden. So if anybody wants to volunteer, you learn as you help build the new vision. And it was a really awesome experience. I helped out on Saturday this week. And then this coming weekend, you're going to learn about Urbanites. I helped build the BioSwale. So it's really fun. So thank you for the innovative work and the exciting thing that the Altadena Library does for our community and how we can all help out. That's it.
Thank you so much for for sharing that. And thank you so much for helping out as well.
Any other questions from the council? I see no more questions. Okay, thank you very much, Victor. I appreciate you stopping, and welcome to your first ATC. You're now at our council meeting, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I assume. Okay, moving on. LA County Parks and Rec, item four point two, Sam Estrada. I can see, but I can't hear you, Sam.
How about now?
There you go. Yep.
Okay, sorry about that. So for the month of September, we did hold our Parks After Dark in motion. So a lot of people were able to come to the park and they were able to walk their dogs, walk, you know, run, ride their bikes, scooters, and everything throughout the park. So we held that on our on Saturday mornings and on Thursday evenings. And so Councilmember Wong was a great proponent for that, and she was also helping and assisting with that as well in advertising and also when she would include our skate ramps and our skate zones. And she helped coordinate a lot of things as far as like communication with the community and also the flow of the event as well. She was a great help. So I want to specifically thank her for her participation in that. And also when during the time when we had the fires and getting the information out to the public that we were not helping the event. So overall, it was a great event. We, it was just a way of expanding our Parks After Dark that we've done in years past. And so this is something that we were able to do to keep people physically distanced from each other and still have an event where people can come out and enjoy the time in the park in safe zones. So also the Parks Bureau were able to be out there and watch the streets while we were doing this event. So that has concluded. Our last day was October tenth. So now our next event that we'll be having is our Halloween drive-through, which will be on Saturday, October thirty-first, from one P M. to four P M. It the, it is free for everybody that would like to attend. It will be held at Farnsworth Park. I'm sorry, excuse me. It will be held at Loma Alta Park, and it will be in the parking lot directly above the, or I should say right next to the pool. So it will be held in that parking lot, and it will be taking place, like I said, October thirty-first, and we are going to be providing candy, arts and crafts kits for the kids, and a free pumpkin, and it will be for six hundred children or three hundred cars. So again, we hope everybody can make that. It should be a great event. The Farnsworth Park Capital Project is well underway. So if you've seen Farnsworth Park, it's pretty much under construction. The building is completely being renovated, so we have a lot of construction going on there. We also have some that's going down on around the baseball field and the picnic shelters down at the lower level. The ADA Walkway is also underway. So if you've seen that, they've been beginning the ADA Rampway that will be going from the top parking lot of next to the Davies Building down to the amphitheater. So that that is still on track to finish in late February of twenty twenty-one. And then we did start our after-school program. However, we don't have any of the programs being held at Farnsworth Park or Loma Alta at this time. However, we are looking forward to bringing back our after-school programs hopefully in the springtime. So we will be keeping everybody posted about that. And then lastly, we do have our our Girls Empowerment Program that's currently running until the end of this month. So if I did send the flyer to Councilmember Wong in Sutherland, so that way they can post that up. It's a great event for girls ages eleven to eighteen, and they can, it's all virtual. So if they miss most of it, they can still register and check out events online. So pretty much wraps everything up for me, but I do thank everybody for the time when we were having these fires for helping us out during the Parks After Dark in motion and all the street closures and everything. Also, we have had a lot of people calling about the voting in the elections. We are not hosting any in-person elections at our parks at the moment. But if you go to LaVote.net, which is also on the side of the voting mailboxes that are posted, as President Malone just said, is that they are at Farnsworth Park and also at Charles White Park. So again, if you want an early ballot, you can drop them off there, and they will be picked up by the County Register Recorder's Office.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Sam?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the council before we move on? I don't see. Okay, no questions. Moving on. Thank you very much, Sam.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you next month. And I'm going to now move on to item four point three for the Altadena Chamber of Commerce, Doug Caulifair.
Good evening, everybody. Just two quick things. Nominations are open currently for the Altadena Chamber of Commerce twenty twenty Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year. All the information is up on our website under Happenings tab, if you will, including nomination forms. Nominations are due Friday, November sixth at five P M. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the office or you can contact me personally if you wish. But please, if you've got somebody you're you're teetering about, do a nomination. We have a lot of good folks out in the community and so we encourage you to submit a nomination. And then secondly, fall is the time that we look at filling any board positions on the chamber, and we do have some openings. They need to be a member in good standing, and those need to be submitted no later than Friday, October thirtieth. So and again, any additional information, any questions, you can reach out directly to me or to the office. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
I just have a quick question, Doug. You mentioned a couple of times to contact you. Could you actually give out the contact information that you could be reached at?
Sixty-six, five-two-four, four-one-five-eight. And that's my cell phone, so you can call or text.
Do you have an email as well?
Doug dot cauliflower at gmail dot com.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And I I also second what Doug was saying is our Chamber of Commerce is really unique, and you might not think that it affects you too much, but it is it is part of our historic background. It's one of the oldest chambers in in the state. It's got a lot of history. It's not sponsored by anybody other than community members. So it's it's really important, and if you want to get involved and help within the community, it's another great way to participate and actually do things for our community, within our community. Okay, I'm gonna, thank you very much. Any questions for Doug anymore before I move on? I'm gonna switch screens again. Okay, thanks, Doug. I really appreciate it. Moving on, item, item five now, Committee Reports, five point one Land Use Committee, Councilmember Marcusson.
We did not hold a land use meeting this month. We did not have anything to review, but I fully expect that we will have a meeting in November. So everybody mark your calendars for real. And we have a number of items that I'm hoping one or more of them will be ready for November. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. We already changed the the meeting date in November, too?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? You are absolutely right. My apologies. We, our our land use meeting will be on Thursday, the fifth. Is that right?
Right.
Because Tuesday, the third, is election night. So while I know that, you know, nobody will really be doing anything that night, we wanted to we wanted to allow everybody to be able to be glued in front of their television sets. So we moved that meeting, that the November meeting, to Thursday night, seven P M. We'll send out a link. We've confirmed with Pasadena Media. Thank you for them to be flexible. We appreciate them helping us out.
Do you still have a question, Councilmember now? No, okay.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
No other questions. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Marcusson. Moving on, item five point two, Councilmember Wong.
Yes, thank you. So it's a semi-exciting time out there while people are moving around in the streets. And transportation is really being looked at as relates to climate change. And Metro has been trying to update their bus service from the past twenty-five years and then dealing with budgets. So if anyone's interested in transit, I have been a part of a working group for transit in LA County. So there is definitely concern that the next-gen bus service will not exist, will go away, will get pushed further down the road. Meanwhile, we do have, we have been, Altadena has been a part of a micro-transit pilot grant. And I think that's potentially moving forward. So as it relates to Altadena, if anyone really is concerned about transit service, which we all should be, the meeting coming up on Thursday, I'll post it. I guess I can post it on on the website, but it's the Metro General Meeting, and they will be talking about next-gen bus and micro-transit, and Altadena is part of that equation. So if you're interested, Thursday's Metro Meeting. Also, currently, well, actually, next week, the county has also been paying attention to some of the movement that has resulted from the Safe Streets Committee and also lining up with the twenty nineteen action plan for Vision Zero from LA County Public Health as well the County Sustainability Plan as it relates to transportation. And so it's kind of an exciting time because instead of updating just the Bicycle Master Plan, that's almost a decade old, the county is actually applying for, I think, two levels of sustainability grants as it relates to what's called active transportation. So it's not just the bicycle plan. It's really how we fairly move around our community by different modes and abilities. So the county is having a community meeting that I suggest all council members share with their constituents, too. And it was going to be this Thursday, but the presidential debate is going on. So it got moved to October twenty-ninth, six to eight P M. I have it on the website. And just quickly, LA County Public Works is applying for the Sustainable Communities Program Grant to create an active transportation plan for the Altadena community. The Active Transportation Plan would create a plan to address infrastructure gaps, safety concerns, and increase connectivity and mobile, and increase, sorry, and increase connectivity and mobility within the Altadena community. So that meeting is at six o'clock on the twenty-ninth Thursday, and it's posted on the website. And last but not least, as was mentioned earlier, the county's Vision Zero and COVID plan to have people move safely in their street is called Slow Streets. So currently, there is, I think, two or three networks that have been put in so far. One in My Census Tract from Fair Oaks to Lincoln and then the streets in between. So I've been now working within the community for people on certain intersections to become ambassadors. So I have this also posted on the website. So the county is looking for Slow Street ambassadors. Again, multiple people have been applying already. Also in Census Tract forty-six-ten, there's been some application from residents there as well. So just check out the website. Again, Slow Streets is the program from the county's local emergency response to COVID. And again, it is in alignment with the county's Vision Zero plan. And so we want to keep our streets safe while people are moving. And then if anyone becomes a captain for an intersection, I have a little packet for you, and you can also hand out flyers to your neighbors. Any questions, anybody?
Councilmember Marcusson?
Dot, I would very much appreciate talking with you, maybe even after the meeting tonight offline, about your active transportation, the community meeting. I think there's a disconnect there. So if you could just call me after the meeting, that would be great.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Sutherland?
Not a question, but just so that you know, Dorothy, the twenty-ninth meeting, there'll be a whole bunch of people on the screen that won't be there because that's the MBBA Forum for the election.
What time?
Seven to eight thirty.
Okay, well, this meeting goes six to seven.
Six, right, yeah.
So maybe we can get it done quickly.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Wong. I'm going to move on to the last item on the Committee Reports. It's a very small item. Go to the Election Committee, and we're going to Councilmember Jones. And before we start, I just want to give out a huge, huge, big personal thank you to Councilmember Jones because most people aren't even aware of the amount of work that was involved in this, especially when our original election was a few months ago, and she was the chair of it then, and it turned into a hold, new processing, developing new methods, new ways, and then new committee members that's come on board to support us. So I I want to thank you so much for the amount of work and making this actually happen for us and the town council and the community. Thank you. And over to you, Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Billy. I want to thank Nick Santangelo. He's my vice chair. So I made an executive decision and got a vice chair because there was just too much and too much work to do. And Nick stepped right up. I call him, and I say, can you be at the spot in ten minutes? And he's there. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate the entire committee. So it's it's a lot of work and it changes daily, and things are going up on the website daily. So you should check the website. Election Committee has worked diligently over the past four weeks. We met three times and discussed how to run this election in the face of a pandemic. The committee had a meeting with electionbuddies.com, an online platform for voting. And we were doing this so that people that could not come out to the polls would still be able to vote. We have a huge interest in this election, it's huge. I already have two people signed up that want ballots delivered to them. And we haven't even announced that we're doing that, so, I mean, it's just all brand new. After much discussion, the committee decided that we could not use the online platform for this election, but we would recommend it to be considered for use in future elections. It's a real good platform, but it took a lot more than we had time to do. I have a short, very short PowerPoint with some details in there that I'd like to share my screen and have you guys see. So I'm gonna try this, I am technology challenged, so I'll let you know ahead of time, but eventually I usually get it. So I want to share that, and I want to go here, and then I want, and you see, uh, let's see. Okay, I told you I'm technology challenged. How do I get my presentation?
You should be able to.
It's a slideshow.
You start slideshow.
Okay, push slideshow.
Nope. You need to go down to the bottom.
Uh huh.
And put your cursor down on the bottom where it says notes and comments.
Okay.
Now, go, don't click on that yet, just yet. Go over to comments, and then the next icon. And then the next icon. And go over one more icon.
Okay.
One more.
Order, okay? Click on that.
Nope. Nope, go, go to the next icon next to that, there you go.
Oh, okay, there we go. Okay, and I, I practiced this earlier, so I don't know what happens when I do it live, it doesn't work. Okay, so basically, here's what I want you to see. We have fourteen candidates. We are offering vote from home, and it's only available for those that are homebound. Oh, it went away. It went away. Okay, let's try that one more time, I'm so sorry. Okay, so there's a slide, okay. We have early voting at the main library, three to five. We have two banners up in the community, one at Grocery Outlet, and the other one on Lincoln, north of Woodbury. We're going to be putting up an online volunteer sheet where you can go online and sign up for, to volunteer. We estimate we need about twenty volunteers. We have four polling places. We have Grocery Outlet, we have Gordy's, Towing, and we have the two libraries, Bob Lucas and the main library. So those are our four polling places. Our regular voting will be from nine to three on Saturday, November seventh. We're going to be having Blair ROTC help with the voting, they'll help keep us sanitized and in line. So these are the main things for the voting, main points. And the website is at the bottom there, just click on there and all this information is on there. And if there's anything that you want on there, you can meet the candidates on there, their, their statements are there, and a lot of other stuff pertaining to the election, so please go there and look at that. So that, that's my slideshow. Took longer to get it up than it did to say it. Okay. Okay, I didn't lose you, so I was worried about that, okay. So now, we're going to, that concludes my report. And now we'll hear from thirteen of the fourteen candidates. One couldn't make it tonight, but I will read hers. And I would like to do it, if it's okay, to do it, I would like to do it in order of census tracts. Is that okay, Billy?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Is that good? Okay, so we're gonna start with Census Tract forty-six oh one. And we're gonna have Connor Chipapola.
Chipapola, yep.
Chipapola, okay. Thank you, I can mess up names, so correct me.
That's all right, thank you Veronica.
You have limiting time Veronica.
You have three minutes.
All right, hello neighbors. My name's Connor Chipapola, and I'm running first to represent Census Tract forty-six oh one. I was raised in Sierra Madre, I work in La Cuenada, and I'm blessed to live in what is truly beautiful Altadena. The foothills are my home. I'm running to pay forward what I've received from this council and this city. I'm not running to represent myself, my own agenda, or some pet project. As a representative, you can expect me to listen well and to champion your voice. This would be my first time on the town council, so I'd like to share some of my out-of-office experience because my values and actions as a resident will be exactly what you can expect from me as a representative. First, the diversity of Altadena is truly unique in our area, and I don't take it for granted. I don't take for granted the work that's been done and that needs to be done to maintain it. That's why I spent Father's Day with my son, the Fathers for Justice Rally organized by the Clergy Coalition Council. That's why my wife, who's Armenian, and I, and I joined a hundred thousand others on a march this last week to the Turkish Embassy against Azerbaijani aggression in Artsakh, and why we participate in fundraisers locally from our Armenian businesses. That's why, down the road in La Cuenada, I orchestrated and facilitated a conversation between the captain of brig station and the local BLM chapter, out of which came a peaceful memorial march with six hundred people in attendance for George Floyd down Foothill Boulevard. You can trust me to champion your voice and to work collaboratively with community stakeholders to maintain the values of our community. Second, I've had my car broken into twice over the last couple of years, and I know many neighbors have experienced the same. And some have experienced worse. So when our sheriff's station was slated for closure, I and many others in our neighborhood wrote letters, made phone calls, and displayed yard signs to save our station. I also just spent the last couple of months going back and forth with Edison and Public Works to fix the broken lights on my street, which got done. You can trust me to persevere in ensuring that our community is safe and secure. And third, I want our local businesses to thrive. Whenever possible, I forego Home Depot and Starbucks to shop at Altadena Hardware and Cafe de Leche. This is why I spoke up and wrote letters, supporting a dining development in the vacant Webster's Pharmacy Building. And it's why I advocated for the closure of the dispensary on Lake Avenue, not because I have anything against marijuana, because, because I watched some teenagers that I know well walk out with goodie bags. I want to see businesses, perhaps even a dispensary, come to our community and bolster the businesses around them, not detract from them. These are a few of the community values you can expect from me to champion your voice. You can find out more at a little website I threw together, ConnorForCouncil.com. But I hope I can count on your vote come November, thank you guys for the time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now Amy Lyford.
Hello, good evening. I'm really pleased to be here, and I thank you for the time to hear from us as candidates for the town council. I've lived in Altadena for twenty-one years. I, I'm a professor at Occidental College, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about the work I've been doing there because I think some of that work will translate to the work on the council. I've served as a department chair, I've been the president of the faculty, which is an elected position, and I've also worked as an associate dean of the college for arts and humanities. I'm really excited to join the Altadena Town Council at this time because I'm at a point in my life where I feel that I have the time and the energy to devote to spending time in and with the community, and to do the work that might be required of me. I will be a persistent advocate for an active participant in the work of governance, and it's something I've spent a lot of time thinking about in my time at Occidental. At, as, as a faculty member at Occidental, I've also participated in a lot of activities that I think will translate well to the work on the council. I've been involved in budget planning and strategic planning. I've been on the Architectural Design Review Committee. I've worked on the Physical Master Plan of the college. And I was a prime design advocate and member of a sustainability committee that included the installation of a large solar array on the campus, which really required a lot of interaction with the local community in Highland Park because of the arrays' visibility there. I've also worked for the last fifteen years on reciprocal programs engaging the local, local community of Highland Park and Eagle Rock with the arts and sciences. And I really hope to bring all of these skills to my work on the council. One of my major goals as a member of the council will be to not only work for my own Census Tract of four-six-oh-one, but to also collaborate with and work for all of the census tracts and the residents of those different areas of the community. And as part of that, I feel that my work as a collaborative person who's a good listener will allow me and really give me the opportunity to really forge those connections across the different census tracts. I'm also a person who's not gonna shy away from engaging in difficult conversations. And as a good listener, I think I'm able to hear from all different constituencies and to then try to translate what I hear into a plan of action. And if there's one thing I think my colleagues might say about me, it's that I'm very, very pragmatic, and I like to get things done. I'll say one other thing about my preparation, I think, for this position. I really don't have a personal agenda. I'm really interested in making Altadena the place that we all love and to improve all of the things that make us, make this diverse community a special place for us. And one of the ways that I feel that I can offer a new perspective perhaps on that kind of collaboration across census tracts is the fact that at Occidental, I have to work with a wide range of students, faculty, and staff from incredibly diverse backgrounds, identity positions, and abilities. I'm really interested in uplifting the voices and the diversity of voices that make up our community and to advance our shared goals through concrete actions on behalf of everyone. So I really would bring this approach and these kinds of skills to my work on the council, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear from me tonight, thank you.
Thank you. That was forty-six oh one, now we move on to forty-six oh two, and we start with Donald McCormick.
You're on mute, Don, can you turn off your mute?
Sorry about that, thank you for the hint. My name is Don McCormick, I am a longtime resident of Altadena. I moved here for the first time in nineteen ninety-four. When I first started shopping at the hardware store in the center of town, it was called Little Hardware. And I've been shopping there ever since. I love the friendliness and diversity of our community. I raised two children here, they're now both grown, they still come back for visits. Unlike several of the candidates you've heard speak, I do not have much background in community service. And the reason I am speaking to you now is that I would like to change that. With my children grown, and my job pretty stable, I have more time to spend on, hopefully, community service and other related things. I love this community and I've lived here for a long, long time. I had to move away for a few years for family reasons, but I'm glad to be back. By vocation, I am a lawyer. I have been advocating for clients, both popular and unpopular, for many, many years. And I would like to bring those skills to representing not just my census tract, but our wonderful community. I believe I work well with others, like working from consensus, and am able to understand rules and regulations of complex programs because of my background as a lawyer and a litigator. So I thank you for listening to me. I look forward to, if I am lucky enough to get a position on the council, working with everyone in the most collegial and easiest kind of way. Thank you all.
Thank you, now we have Nick Arzon.
That's good. Hi neighbors, I'm Nick Arzon, I'm originally from Iowa, and I've now lived in Southern California for twenty-five years. My husband and I came to Altadena in search of a small town or kind of a village-like atmosphere to raise our family, and now the kids are grown, kind of, two in high school, one in college. And I'm really eager to donate my time and energy to help preserve and improve our already incredible community. I've been in the region long enough to know that all of our challenging issues are not necessarily easily answered. They take more than just rules and legislation, they require community involvement, listening to each other, and working together with respect for our different points of view. I think differing views shouldn't limit us, they should expand our experience, and they should strengthen us. So me personally, I'm currently the program coordinator for a CDC-recognized diabetes prevention program. But I have had a wide variety of jobs over the years, giving me a wide array of experience, and I think an ability to see things from different points of view. In the entertainment world, I've been a director, I've been a writer, I've been an actor, I've been a manager of a recording studio, a property manager, an office manager for a studio accounting team, lots of crazy different jobs, but I think I brought my same leadership strengths to each one. Assembling teams who work well together, truly listening to issues and complaints as they came to me, and recognizing things that were not working, also always keeping the team bonded and strong enough to tackle any challenge. So the role of the town council is to provide a voice for you. Now, Altadena is a unique and diverse community, and I, I can't pretend that my personal life experience or my, my good intentions alone will be what's needed to serve you. I know that I'll need to make myself available to you to listen to your stories, your points of view, and at times be an advocate for things that I may not fully understand or even agree with. I keep witnessing these folks who decide that their experience is the only one that matters and ignoring the struggles and points of view of their neighbors, as though something that hasn't directly affected them simply doesn't exist or need to be addressed. Okay, so I pledge to keep trying to be sure that you are heard by me, by each other, by this council, and ultimately by other city, county, and state officials who can and should address your concerns. Because your concerns will be my concerns, and my job will be to listen, learn, and trust you. And in doing so, I hope you learn to trust me as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is, the next census tract is forty-six oh three oh one. And Hannah Petry is not here, she asked me to read hers. I'll need somebody to time me because it's really long.
I'll time you, I have it ready, I, I've been timing as we go, so.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you, she says, "Thank you for this opportunity to share more about why I'm running. I have always had a passion for offering my talents and skills in the public square for the greater good. My day job is a full-time you, you tan, you utilitarian, universalistic minister. Currently, in my fifth year of serving my congregation in Studio City. This is my sixteenth year of full-time parish ministry, I'm forty-seven years old, and have lived in Altadena since two thousand and nine. My favorite, favorite motto is, 'There is no limit to where a person can go as long as she or he does not care who gets the credit.' This speaks to features of mine, which are humility and a love for being as a team, empowering constituents to make, take credit for projects and goals achieved while I work behind the scenes to help make them happen. When people have faith in their leaders, they will want to do more projects, and we will have more community partners building off past successes. I appreciate the unique features of my census tract. We have three distinct communities, the Meadows to our west, the Chantry Community to our north, and Lavinia Gated Community that resides in the middle. I have a good con, I have a good contact with Lavinia who will aid with communication. I also have a personal access point to the Meadows via Severa Grant, who has shepherd the community garden many years. I have a couple contacts in Chantryville, and several in my neighborhood near Palm and Olive. I'm a natural relationship builder, respected within the community due to years of community organizing in both Pasadena and Altadena. Perhaps most important, when dealing with the county, I am patient, yes, yet persistent in going after goals the ATC sets for itself as a whole. I respect the station of our elected officials and how to lobby them. I train with the Midwest Academy, which is the premier organization in the country that teaches community organizing. So I also know how to pressure our, our electives to get things done because I am recognizing, I did, identify their tactic. I can recognize and identify their tactics when they are trying to skirt our requests, deny their accountability or prolong a matter hoping we will just go away. In two thousand and fifteen, I organized a six-month anniversary march of a gang-related murder that took place right in front of my friend Christie Lee's business, Fair Oaks Burger. This brought the community together and I also made friends with the owner of Pizza of Venice across the street who witnessed the incident. Most importantly, it conveyed to the parents of the Is that three minutes? Okay, I'll just read her last paragraph because there's about six more. Finally, I, I come in with no hidden agenda, feel that the nonpartisan nature of this position is very appealing and would be glad to get to know everyone on the ATC to some degree. This is in the spirit of a stronger, more cohesive community as we face the challenges of the twenty-first century together as one Altadena. That's from Hannah Petrie. Okay, our next one will be Daniel Morales.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Great, thank you. My name is Daniel Morales and I'm originally from Mexico, came here, I don't know, maybe thirty-something years ago to go to school at UCLA. And one of the things that I discovered when I came to Altadena before I bought my house, I started knocking the doors of my neighbors and just asking, "How long have you been living here?" And all my neighbors, twenty-five years, ten years, fifteen years. So that made me realize that this is a very stable community, that people really want to live here long-term. So I ended up buying a James cottage and I've been loving it ever since. I mean, it's a wonderful community, the diversity of its people and its neighborhoods, it's just, it's just fabulous. And when I started involved at the beginning, I, I got involved with the James Village Heritage Project, which we started back then and we were able to put the signs together. We started neighborhood groups and it was a very exciting moment for me. I was very involved in the communities. Then I got involved in a software project and that kind of put a little bit of my time out, so I started some entrepreneurial venture. And all my time, I've been involved with small businesses. I was involved with the economic development organizations. I ran the LA Riot Business Assistance Center back in nineteen ninety-two and then the Nordish earthquake when I was working for the Valley Economic Development Center. So it was very challenging times. And after that, I kind of go back and forth between business development and entrepreneurial ventures. And I, when I became director for the San Gabriel Valley Small Business Development Center, realized that there's a lot of resources that people don't know about the business. And now with the COVID and a lot of people working from home and new businesses closing, people are reinventing themselves. So now that I'm kind of, kind of at a position that I have the time, semi-retired, launching another project, I realized that it's important that the community of Altadena people know about what is available for them. Because a strong community that thrives, it impacts their homes, it impacts the businesses. I mean, people, they have good jobs, they have good businesses, they keep their homes nice and it's important for the community. So what I wanted to do as a, as a member of the town council is to bring the resources and focus and create the Business and Economic Development Committee. So that way we can thrive more and really help with the, with the community and how we can make it prosper. So I'm looking forward. I've worked with officials. I mean, I was president of the Department of Chamber of Commerce many years ago and I worked with, when I was director for the Small Business Development Centers, I worked with U D two organizing small business trainings throughout the San Gabriel Valley. So I'm familiar with working with government officials, with the county. So I wanted to bring that knowledge aside, kind of getting facing my life, kind of bring that knowledge and those talents to the community so that where people can use them and benefit it. And for those who work from home or for those who start a new business, if we can focus and, and, and make it thrive. So with that, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity. If I'm elected, those are the three goals that I wanted to bring. One is to start that committee, two, bring those resources, and three is to work with the officials to bring those resources and work with the community in addition to make it a good neighbor. I mean, there's a, there's talk about what's going to be future for James Village and there's a lot of other things that are coming down the pipeline. So it is also part of what I'm going to get involved and just be part of the community. For a while, I was thinking in retiring and moving somewhere, but I just realized that Altadena is just a beautiful place to actually call it home. So I decided to stay here for a little longer and I wanted to start giving back to the community that I love so much. So with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to your support.
It's three minutes.
Thank you, Daniel. Aaron Cheetah, you're up.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. My name's Aaron Cheetah. I'm the current co-representative for Altadena Census Tract forty-six oh three point one. This would be my second term serving the Altadena residents of Alt, or the residents of Altadena if reelected. I've lived in the area since two thousand and fifteen and my family has found what we believe to be the perfect Los Angeles County location here in the foothills of the San Gabriel Mountains. Over the past two years, I have enjoyed listening to and working with residents to resolve community issues and special projects. I was incredibly happy to finally see the fruition of the crossing walk area that now lights up right next to the community garden here in, in our census tract. I'd like to continue to serve the public and the residents here in Altadena and continue my journey of public service. So I'd like you to please consider voting for me to continue to provide you and your family your representation in this amazing community and the county of Los Angeles for the next Altadena council term. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, now we're going to forty-six oh three point oh two. We have Chris O'Malley.
Good evening. A little nervous. First off, I'd like to thank Councilmember Jones for all the hard work that she's put into running this thing. My name's Chris O'Malley. I'm running for forty-six oh three point oh two. I am the only one running, so I'm going to try to keep this really short. My family and I moved here about four years ago when my wife and I found out that we were going to have a kid. We've since had the kid. We love Altadena. This place is fantastic. In my day job, I am a teacher at Glendale High School. I teach AP US History and Economics. I am also the chair of the Social Studies Department. One of my primary responsibilities in that job is to serve as a liaison between my teachers and the administration, which I think parallels the town council's job pretty well, serving as a liaison between the community members and the Los Angeles governing boards. For the last year, I have had the honor to serve on the Land Use Committee in Dr. Sandra E. Thomas's seat. Thank you, Dr. Thomas, where I have voted to expand opportunities for small business, where I have voted to keep in mind the, the needs and desires of our community members in order to build a better Altadena. If you would like, if you have any questions, you can email me at chris@chrisomalley.org. That's O-M-A-L-L-E-Y dot O-R-G. I will also have a website up at some point soon, once I figure out how that works. Thank you very much for your time. I hope I can get your support.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we're going to go to forty-six ten and we're going to start with Darrell Aranda.
Hi, everybody. I'm in an unstable location, well, not unstable internet connection here in Atlanta. Taking some time out of my trip to make sure I can come down, out and introduce myself. As you guys all know, I've grown up in the neighborhood. I have gone many years to experience many friends all throughout this, the, our Altadena. And I have been lucky enough to be able to move back into the neighborhood. I bought my house there next to Jack, Jackson Elementary and have really watched this, this neighborhood flourish over these last thirty years. I've worked so much with the LA County Federation of Labor. I've worked with my union. I have taken leadership positions for many years through both of our, from our, from our annuity trusts to the leadership in my union. I've gone and helped to build the safety and training program for my union. I am a OSHA-certified trainer for OSHA tens and OSHA thirties for general industry. So I'm a teacher in my union. I have done so many years of taking care of my, the people I work with and working with the county fed to help all people within the county and I've
I think he froze.
To focus and I wanted to serve. Excuse me?
You keep freezing.
So, yeah, I'm in a hotel in Atlanta, so it's, it's tough. So I'm looking forward to serving. I'm looking forward to working with you guys. I understand the diverse and I look forward to, to working with all of you if I can, for your, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, next time, check out a hotspot from Take With You. They have the hotspots. They work.
Thirteenth floor, right?
Okay.
It's, it's midnight, so, yeah, it's tough.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, now we have Sandra Gutierrez.
So with much respect, I'm going to begin with a few words from our beloved Justice Gunsberg. Women belong in all places where decisions are made. It shouldn't be that women are the exception. Justice Gunsberg understood the impact of women and not only believed in them, but also recognized their diverse perspective and power. If elected to be part of town council, I hope to continue with Justice Gunsberg's legacy and create impact in my community that goes beyond my tenure. As an Altadena native and resident for over three decades, I've seen Altadena blossom, as you have all mentioned. I once lived at the Altadena Library as a child, of course, not literally. But I also love to see new generations do the same. As a native, I understand the needs of all the citizens of Altadena, from our schoolchildren to our growing senior population. I'm confident in my ability to provide sensible recommendations and keep the growth of Altadena fulfilling to the community. I have extensive background in finance and accounting as it relates to real estate and hope to apply those skills to this position. Additionally, I have prior work experience in community development and outreach where extensive attention to detail and review of permitting laws was critical. I'm confident in my ability to provide sound town council decisions and will strive to keep a keen focus on, one, supporting local businesses through job creation and economic development; two, increasing public safety that allows for more walkable and bikeable Altadena; and finally, but of course not lastly, three, increasing community activities that engage our youth and retired citizens. Building our community is a collaborative effort. I kindly ask that you vote for me as we move forward with a prosperous Altadena. Together, we could build and sustain a stronger community. Thank you for your time and please vote for me.
Hey, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to Census Tract forty-six eleven and we have our own beloved Pat Sutherland.
Thank you very much, Veronica. My name is Pat Sutherland and I am running for reelection in Census Tract forty-six eleven. For those of you who don't know, the boundaries of our tract are roughly Lake Avenue on the east, Woodbury to the south, Fair Oaks to the west and Mariposa on the north. I joined the council in two thousand and fourteen because I needed something to do and thought that my experience in sales and management with major corporations would help me to be successful. Also, a then council member, who I met when I volunteered to work at an ATC voting site, at Gordy's, as a matter of fact, told me he thought I'd be good for the council. So I thought, "Why wouldn't I succeed?" Well, I quickly found out I had a lot to learn. Those attributes I thought would help did help me eventually. Since I joined the council, I've served on the Land Use Committee, the Film Committee, the Election Committee and the Bylaws Committee, and probably a couple of committees that I have forgotten about by this time. My professional life as a banker has served me well on the Land Use Committee. A lot of my banking career was as a lender. And what we do when we work on a conditional use permit for a resident is much like putting together a loan request and presenting it to an underwriter for approval. In our case, we're presenting the package to regional planning for approval or denial, if that will be our recommendation. My career in retail department stores helped me with the communication part of the council. This is a challenge without a local newspaper, so individual council members have the primary responsibility in their own census tracts. We've made our ATC website better, but there's still a lot of work to be done. I personally use Nextdoor to communicate with my census tract plus an email list for those people that do not use Nextdoor. I've been on the executive committee for five years, two as treasurer, as treasurer and the past three years as a vice chair. Being a vice chair is not unlike managing a bank or department store branch, both of which I have done. I have been responsible for making sure that the room is prepared for the monthly meeting, making sure the agenda, as well as any general council communications, are posted and sent to everyone needing them. No matter what happens, I'll tell you after listening to everybody here, I know that there's, we're going to have some very qualified people on the council for the next, yeah, I see you nodding, Veronica, for the next, next term. And here's the message for those of you who are here virtually, who will be seated as new council members in December. I've, this is stuff that I've learned. Don't try to learn everything at once. I heard Nick say the word that I have in big capital letters, "Listen. Listen to see how the council works. Remember, there's a reason God gave you two ears and one mouth. Sometimes you have to ask questions before giving an answer or trying to solve a problem. The issue may already have been addressed and solved." Okay, jump on. If you don't win your race this time, don't give up. Stay in touch, watch the meetings, read the minutes, offer to help set up the room for the monthly meetings when we finally have them again. Often, there's a call for the community to join a committee and it's not unusual to run again. As an example, I want to welcome both Doug Cauliflower and Chris O'Malley to the council this year, both who ran recently and did not make it onto the council. So we're glad to see you. You're a valuable asset to us. And to the residents of Census Tract forty-six eleven, thank you for supporting my efforts in the past and I hope for your continued support for the future. Overtime, I'm sorry. That's it.
Okay, now we have Alan Peck. Unmute yourself, Alan.
There you go. And good evening. My name's Alan Anthony Peck. I was born and raised in Washington DC. After graduating from public high school, I attended the University of Pennsylvania, graduating from the Wharton School of Business back in seventy-six. In nineteen ninety-eight, I moved to Los Angeles based on my brother's raving about the weather and the opportunities. As it turns out, he was true. It was all true. However, it wasn't until I got married, had a child, bought a house in Altadena in nineteen ninety-five that I discovered what the true benefits of living in Southern California could be. I was surprised by the graciousness and generosity of my new neighbors. I was impressed by the quality of the municipal services. And then, but the most important thing that I, truly amazed me was the wide array of community events at which my family and I participated enthusiastically. My municipal corporate and entrepreneurial experience has afforded me many opportunities to help individuals and businesses interface with and receive benefits and services from a wide range of government agencies. I've also earned a master's of public administration degree from Cal State Dominguez Hills in two thousand and fifteen. Among other things, this gave me a fairly clear understanding of the responsibilities and authorities of the various arms of federal, state and local government. I will bring this background of knowledge and experience to the Altadena Town Council as I pursue the following platform. One, enhancing community services and addressing community concerns. As a member of the Altadena Town Council, my first responsibility is As a member of the Altadena Town Council, my first responsibility is to the welfare of the Altadena citizens. To that end, I will work with the council to support local libraries, the senior community centers, schools, churches and the other organizations that are already doing their part to support our citizens and to ensure the accessibility to public streets and accommodations for all our citizens and to develop and identify more affordable housing options for seniors and young adults. Two, promoting and supporting community institutions and traditional events. Our weekly, monthly and annual festivals, markets, parades and other community events are the heart of what makes Altadena so very special. I will work with the council to sustain and support these events by promoting Altadena history, the deep well from which all of these community events have sprung, as well as working with the state, county and other public and private entities to identify any opportunities for them to assist in making these events even more successful. Finally, number three, promoting and supporting small and local businesses. As was said before, I'm saying this finally, but it is not the last thing. It's one of the most important things. These businesses are the economic engine upon which the rest of our community relies. I will work with the council to pursue private grants, public-private partnerships and the maintenance of a balance between community businesses and national chains, so that we can still maintain the beauty of our community environment. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, we go to forty-six twelve and we have Doug Cauliflower.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Cauliflower, I'm running for Census Track forty-six twelve. Um, I discovered Altadena in the spring of nineteen eighty-four while doing my due diligence for the lease management opportunity for the Altadena and Eaton Canyon Golf Courses. My partner and I were successful in winning that bid and assumed operation of the golf courses in December of nineteen eighty-four. I believe my initial community involvement began in the late eighties when I joined the Altadena Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I have served the Chamber Board almost continuously since that time, including a number of years as treasurer and I'm currently serving my second term as president. I was also a member of the original Board of Directors for FAST, which was the Friends of the Altadena Sheriff's Station, which we all know now as SUGA or Sheriff Support Group of Altadena. I was also one of the founding committee members that launched an annual golf tournament that raised significant monies for both FAST, um, and the Chamber of Commerce in the, probably the good portion of the early nineties. I purchased a home finally in nineteen ninety-two here in Altadena and moved to Altadena. I met my wife Candace shortly thereafter and we raised our two children, um, Dylan and Jenna here in Altadena. I remained very active in the community, including several years on the town council, uh, representing Census Track forty-six oh three oh one, until the fall of two thousand twelve when my golf course leases ended. Um, in December, in September of two thousand thirteen, I accepted a general manager's position in a golf course up in the Central Valley, uh, which was a, a good opportunity. I took the position, my family remained here in Altadena and I was back as time permitted to visit. Not an ideal situation, but you do what you have to do. Um, due to the dramatic downturn, the golf industry and water woes, uh, exasperated by drought, we, we decided to close that golf course in July of two thousand fifteen. I had acquired my rate, real estate license in two thousand thirteen and after much contemplation, decided to leave the golf course industry and enter, uh, beginning career in real estate. I returned to Altadena in October of two thousand fifteen and started in real estate in November. And I wasted little time before rejoining the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors and taking a seat on the land use committee, uh, representing Census Track forty-six twelve, where I now reside. And in the spring of two thousand seventeen, I joined the Rotary Club of Altadena. I grew up in Ohio and very much loved the rural community feel and I know it was one of the main reasons I've grown to appreciate Altadena so much. Having been in our, having been in business in our community for nearly forty years and living here for close to thirty, I've come, come to know the community well. While our community is a wonderful place to live, work and visit, we do have our challenges. I'm running for the town council seat uh, because I believe I can be an asset to the community in dealing with our challenges and capitalizing on some of the opportunities. I will bring to the Altadena County Council a great deal of experience working with governmental agencies, businesses of all kinds, and I have excellent interpersonal skills. Additionally, I've, as I have grown older and hopefully a little wiser, I've learned the importance of real listening and I work hard to improve this skill along with asking the right questions in order to truly understand what's most important to all parties. I feel only then we are in a position to negotiate a true win-win mindset. I bring these skills along with the pledge to maintain positive can-do attitude and work hard for the betterment of our community. I look forward to continuing my service in our community and becoming an asset on the town council representing Census Track forty-six twelve. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Okay, thank you. We move right along to forty-six thirteen and we have beautiful Diane Markison.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I too, I'm running on a post, so I'll try to keep it short. Um, I've been an Altadena Town Council representative for the last ten years and prior to that was on just the land use committee for, um, five years before that. So have been on land use for fifteen years. Um, I live in a part of Altadena that has a Pasadena address, which provides its own unique challenges, um, for our little area of Altadena. Um, although we are not a government organization by any stretch of the imagination, um, we do have to, have to build relationships with all of the county organizations and I have done that over the last fifteen years, built, um, quite a ro- robust, um, relationship with all of the, a lot of the, I should say, a lot of the community, um, organizations then with all, also the county departments, which is how we actually, um, get things completed here in Altadena. Um, working with Supervisor Bargher's Office quite closely, the Department of Public Works, et cetera. So I, because I've deliver, um, developed those relationships with the county groups, I know that I've been able to serve both my Census tract and Altadena well over the last, um, years that I've been on town council and look forward to doing that, uh, work again for another two years.
Okay, thank you. That wraps it up for our candidate statements. Um, I'm gonna wrap up my part here and I just wanna, uh, just say a couple of things. I went back and researched the history of the town council. I went to the Historical Society and pulled out all the files. Next month, this is the fifty-fifth anniversary of the town council. Position has stand at the test of time and it, it shows by the people that are running for office, it is an important position you're running for and it, it's a, a lot of smart people are interested, a lot of, uh, passionate people on. And so I appreciate all the candidates that have applied and I'm amazed at their credentials and that they're willing to step up to the plate and do this job. Sometimes it's not easy to not get paid and put in so much time and effort. So I appreciate that. I want to, um, also say we have a land use committee that you can learn a lot on land use. I learn more on land use than I do in the town council sometimes. So I think that even if, um, you can't do what you wanna do, try land use. Just, that's just my advice, that's just a personal advice. And someone gave me that advice after I was on the town council and I wish I had have been on land use first. So, um, I just give that advice to you and I thank you. And please look for my emails because I will be forwarding, forwarding you current information. Your next, um, uh, time to be in front of Zoom and all the people will be on MBBA. You'll be doing your statements again there and I'll give you the exact date, time and link. Um, probably tomorrow I should receive it. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me and, um, check the webpage, the webpages daily. Just check for any new information or anything you would like to have put on there. So thank you, that's, go ahead, Billy.
I was gonna open up the questions if you're done, just in case anyone has any questions. But before I, before I do that, I just wanted to mention that, I'm not sure it was clear. We mentioned there was four polling places. Theoretically, there's actually five polling places. One is actually a limited mobile version. Um, but I want to make it clear for transparency reasons that, um, it is treated the same as every other polling station. It isn't an addition, it's a polling station just because it's a limited version and that the same security and safety measures that we are gonna give to every polling station will also be given to that with the same security of number, uh, volunteers and numbers and how it's collected. And I just want to verify with that with you and if anyone has any questions because it is, it is a, 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 I, it is a fifth polling station, but just because it's new. So, any, any question?
We'll be collecting ballots with masks on and gloves on and, um, we will be putting them in sealed envelopes and returning them to be counted. And we're hoping that they're counted not by anybody that's on the, um, council. We want volunteers from the outside to count the ballots.
Well, it gets collected traditionally by the show state. Okay, so go, go ahead, Councilman Sutherland.
I was gonna say, I think that that, you want, you might wanna check the bylaws.
Yeah.
But, um, that needs to be counseled and, cause and, uh, you're, we're limited to who can be there. The only, only certain people can be there when they're counted by the, by.
When they're counted, we're just saying when they're collected.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said when they're counted, excuse me.
Well, I, yeah, I, I just, I think we just need a quick offline conversation about the picking up and all of that. The, um, if I could ask a quick, or make a quick question, Veronica, the NBBA piece, going to that organization to make a statement, is not at all mandatory, um, right, for, for anybody who can't make it by chance. I don't want anybody to feel like, you know, if they can't make it, that somehow it's gonna reflect on, you know, their running. It, it's, I, I totally understand, just wanna make sure everybody knows it's not an ATC event. Anyway, that's all, I just wanna make sure if people can't make it, that they don't feel bad.
Because we're doing, we are in COVID, some changes will have to be made just because we're in this pandemic that may be our one-time changes. And we will discuss them with the executive committee and it will just be changes that makes it easier to get the vote and to make sure everybody has a chance to vote.
Yeah, what, what we need to do is just make sure that any changes that are anticipated, as you mentioned, goes to the, to the executive committee and then we inform the whole town council before the change is made. Um, okay, council member now.
Uh, Chair Jones, I was just curious about Nancy Wayland, who had originally submitted an application in forty-six oh one, but then did she not, um, submit a statement to be read tonight?
Yesterday, she withdrew because of health reasons.
She withdrew, okay, thank you very much.
Well, Curie? Uh, Billy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, is there any, uh, uh, council member, Azimi?
Thank you so much, uh, uh, these are excited times for Altadena. Based on what I, I just observed, the number of candidates that are interested in serving. I say, welcome. And I, I know someone already mentioned it, I, I believe it was, uh, Councilmember Sutherland. Um, if for any reason you did not get the, uh, majority vote, I really encourage you and I would love to see you continue to support your community. It is very, very important. You have the best credentials and Altadena needs you. So please, no matter what happens, be true to your community. You've already stepped up and stepped out there, so we want to see you there. I, I, I served for twelve years and, um, uh, there, there's a lot of fun, a lot of joy, uh, working with the community, being out there. So I welcome you, uh, to continue, uh, what you've already started. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, any other questions in the council? Okay.
Okay, get out there and campaign.
Yes. Congratulations, everybody, for, uh, for wanting to run, first of all, and to take an initiative to run, and I wish you all the best of luck. Um, I'm gonna move on. You're welcome, I'm gonna move on now to item six, general public comments, uh, Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay, I'll read these as quickly as I can in, into the record. The first one comes from, um, Anne Hickinbottom from, um, um, Assemblymember Chris Holden's office and, I can't read them without the light, okay. Um, Assemblymember Chris Holden sends his greetings. Please be advised, our district office remains open remotely Monday through Friday from nine to five. Please contact our office at six two six three five one nineteen seventeen if we can be of any assistance. Also, the staff email addresses are on the website and the website is a forty-one dot A S M D C dot org for that. The next one is from Jonathan Horton from, um, Judy Chu's office. I, I'll say I'm emailing to let you know that Congresswoman Chu is holding a virtual voter information event this Friday, October twenty-third, third at six PM. The hour-long event will include an introduction by Congresswoman Chu, followed by a comprehensive presentation given by the Los Angeles County Register's Office and a brief Q and A session where county officials will answer voters' most pressing questions. The entire event will be broadcast on Facebook Live and translated into Spanish and Mandarin. I hope you can join us this Friday and ask that you share this invitation with your network. If you have any questions about the event, please do not hesitate to call, um, that six two six three oh four oh one one oh or email Jonathan dot Horton at mail dot house dot gov. Thank you very much. Now, the next, um, one, two, the next four are all for the same particular, um, on the same particular subject. Um, the first one is from Heavenly Hughes and, um, she says, greetings, Altadena Town Council and the Altadena, Altadena community. My tribe RISE is a grassroots peace movement founded by Victor Hodgson and Heavenly Hughes, both born and raised in Altadena. Our mission is to embrace the community with P E A C E. Positive energy activates constant elevation. We believe we must connect to correct. Feeding the community is an opportunity to connect with our neighbors. Whether we are feeding the homeless, seniors, homebound persons or families in need, we know acts of kindness and compassion will uplift, uplift our community. We appreciate the support from local business, Altadena Grocery Market Grocery Outlet, helping provide for those in need. On July eleventh, twenty twenty, My Tribe Rise, along with help from Altadena and Pasadena Council members Dorothy Wong and John Kennedy, organized free food and gift giveaway at the Rose Bowl and supported by Pasadena Police Department, California Highway Patrol, the Fire Department, Explodes and Crips clergy and the community of Altadena and Pasadena, who came together in unity to give back to the community. This was vital during this time of COVID nineteen and racial disparities being experienced across America. All walks of life came together to feed over three thousand residents. On June sixth, twenty twenty, My Tribe Rise, along with the Altadena community, including council members, county parks and recreation and county sheriffs, supported the space for Altadena residents to express their concerns on social injustice, marching from Loma Alta to Charles White Park. The peaceful protest had the largest response in the history of Altadena, reaching nearly three thousand people in attendance. For those organizing events in Altadena, Pasadena or LA County, please invite and include My Tribe Rise or other black organizations to be a part. This is another way to connect our community by representing black faces into organized outreaches. For example, the COVID nineteen testing happen, happening in Altadena. We want black people to be tested and. We want Black people to be tested and when you have a Black organization involved, it will feel inclusive to the Black community to partake in safety measures for the health of our communities. Our mission is to change the narrative and renew the minds of those who are in need of support. Oops, lost it. And positive solutions to- Sorry, my phone is ringing up. I can't stop it. "Our mission is to change the narrative and renew the minds of those who are in need of support and positive solutions to lower crime and interferences within our neighborhoods. We need financial support, assistance, and resources to continue our efforts. Thank you for this opportunity to briefly share about My Tribe Rise." The next one is, we have from three community members. Dear council, this is from Solanda Theus. "Dear council members, I've had the pleasure of attending and participating in several events throughout the year that were spearheaded and organized by Heavenly Hughes and Victor Hodgson of My Tribe Rise. I support and believe in My Tribe Rise. Heavenly and Victor have been able to hold peaceful protests across Altadena and Pasadena, as well as educate the community on pivotal matters. Their organization has brought people and businesses together by bridging gaps, creating safe spaces for growth and discussions, uplifting people's voices that tend to go unheard, as well as feeding those in need. Heavenly Hughes and Victor Hodgson are admirable leaders who have made My Tribe Rise a positive peaceful movement that raises, that raises awareness and stimulates the community in a prog, in a progressive way. Therefore, I'm asking that the Altadena Town Council consider supporting My Tribe Rise by awarding the organization with information on grants and/or funding so they can continue to constructively impact our community sincerely." The next one is from Reverend Gloria Davis. "This letter is a request for the support of My Tribe Rises from the Altadena Town Council. This organization has clearly gone above and beyond in their service of distributing food in the Altadena and Pasadena communities. To date, they hosted a peaceful protest for social injustice in Altadena on June 6th, 2020, and on July 11th, 2020, My Tribe Rise successfully collaborated with Altadena Town Council, Dorothy Wong and John Kennedy of the Pasadena City Council to successfully serve over 3,000 families at the Rose Bowl. There were more than 100 volunteers that helped with this food distribution. They could have served more families had they had more food. My Tribe Rise hosted several other food distributions throughout the Altadena and Pasadena communities. The other part of My Tribe Rise mission is to raise consciousness of others for the need for social justice for all. This work would not have been done without the extraordinarily hard work of the founders of this organization, Victor Hodgson and Heavenly Hughes. Thank you for your attention to this important matter." We have one from Dwight Williams. "Dwight Williams, I Dwight Williams am in total support of the organization My Tribe Rise and its founders Heavenly Hughes and Victor Hodgson. They are a couple dedicated to the welfare and well-being of their community and sponsors events and rallies, along with food giveaways to needy families throughout the Pasadena-Altadena areas, as well as to the homeless that further proves their care and concern for their fellow man. I was honored to have been invited to the June 6th, 2020 Altadena peaceful protest and allowed to address the crowd. The event was well-organized and the protesters were peaceful and disciplined. This is a testament to the organizational skills and leadership abilities of Victor and Heavenly. I ask that consideration be given to My Tribe Rise, whatever grant funds or support is available." And the last one is from Yvonne Rich and Sherri Jones. "Thank you to the Altadena Community Member, Council Members, for all your support for the services and work of the organization, My Tribe Rise, in the Altadena-Pasadena communities. Please continue to support all the efforts of this group financially and possible grants. They have done a wonderful job supporting the needs of many people in our communities." And that is the general public comment for tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Sutherland, I'm gonna be moving on. The last item of the evening, Census Track reports, item seven, 7.1, or Census Track 460302.
Hi, good evening and thank you, Mr. Chair. I have about three things that I just wanted to bring to your attention. First, before COVID, I had a traffic study done in the area of Glenrose and Harriet. The residents were concerned about accidents and that type of thing, but I just wanted to let them know that Public Works did put the four-way stop there. And if you go over Glenrose and, and Harriet, you will see stop signs and there's crosswalks there. There was also a, a study, a request for a study for a traffic arrow on Altadena Drive and Lincoln. And this was, this was done before the, before COVID. I haven't heard anything from them yet, but the concern was when, when students, when parents were taking their children to school, there was a big traffic jam up because you had the students also trying to go into Odyssey and you had the ones that were going south turning right. So I had requested a traffic study to see if a, an arrow could be put on the, the stop sign. I haven't heard anything from them and maybe as time goes on, the other council members can follow that up. But I, I did place a call and I think because of COVID-19, we haven't, you know, it hasn't really been a concern, a big concern because now education is taking place at home. Okay, but I just wanted to let, I basically wanted to let them know that if you go over to Harriet and Glenrose, the four-way stop is there. And that was a concern. The next thing I wanted to just make an announcement in terms of the Collaborate Pasadena and Partners COVID-19 testing, the free COVID-19 testing. We just completed two days or this week and yesterday we tested 453 residents that came through. And then today at 4:43, there were 365 that had completed tests. And then when I left, there was about, I would say about 30 people still standing in line. So testing will take place again next week. That's Monday, the 26th and Tuesday, the 27th, from 11 until 6. So if you're, if you need to take a COVID test, it's free. All you have to do is go over to the church. It's at Altadena Seventh Day Adventist Church, 2609 Lincoln Avenue. And we're, we're gonna be continuing to send out emails and flyers so that everybody is aware and everybody can get tested. Okay? And then the last thing is Pasadena Public Health Department and Caltech have teamed up. They have teamed, they have a research team and they're testing saliva for COVID-19 twice a day to learn how to detect the virus earlier. Now, and if you wanna participate in this, you, you have to have at least a household with one person who has had, who has tested positive for COVID-19. You don't have to leave your home. They have to be older than six years. And each participant will receive a Target gift card, up to $230, if you're, you're found to be eligible. So you have to go on the website. and complete a five-minute eligibility survey if you're interested in participating in this COVID test. And there is a phone number listed, 323-478-2167. And that's it. Thank you.
Moving on, Census Track report, 7.2, 4613.
Yeah. Just real quickly, you all may know that we have one of the monument signs, the Altadena, Welcome to Altadena, Thank You for Coming to Altadena monument sign at the corner of Altadena Drive and New York Drive. The lights were broken on that earlier in the year, which we were able to get fixed. The lights are back out again, which I found out today is because of batteries, which they're supposed to be putting in new batteries tomorrow. But the sign, the monument sign has also been tagged. So just to let you know, those people that may be driving up and down New York Drive and other census tracks near me, I've spoken to the sheriff's station. They came out and took a look at the tagging, which they were not familiar with, but will keep an eye on to see if there may be any kind of gang members driving through. I also, they contacted Department of Public Works to get the graffiti removed, but I also contacted one of the supervisors at Department of Public Works that I'm familiar with, who said that she would contact the graffiti removal team and make sure that they are careful when they remove it from our sign because I'm very concerned about the removal of it damaging our monument, you know, which has a lot of things happening there with the metal doors and all of that. Anyway, if you see that, please know that it's being taken care of. The graffiti removal team is supposed to have it off within 48 hours is their delivery. So, and the sheriff's station is already aware. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, that's it, the last item.
Billy, you missed 4610.
Oh, 4610?
Yes, click and it said, the library already told about the Charles White anniversary. It's called Altadena Heroes, but it's basically a celebration of Charles White's life. So it's this Sunday at 3 o'clock.
Thank you. Sorry I missed that. I apologize. And thank you, Pat, for picking me to do that. Okay, all right, last item on the agenda, item eight, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Again.
Okay. Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Let me just say-
Okay, so moved unanimously.
Okay, we're adjourned, but one thing, I had the COVID testing yesterday at noon. This morning at 3 o'clock, I got the results. That's how we negative.
Wow.
Oh yeah, it's fast.
Really fast, so.
Wow, that is fast.
All right.
Go Dodgers!